Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, the June 27, 2024 meeting. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the filing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. First up is Appeal Number 2024-0114, Second Street Townhouses. Anne Marie, you want to open?
Yes, if I could. So, Second Street Townhomes, 46 East Second Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 60128-5-31, Downtown Center 4, D.C. 4 zoning, parking stall variance. Applicant requests variance and/or relief from Chapter 301, 151b1, where proposed number of on-site parking stalls is 11 and the minimum required is 12. This was adjourned and kept open from the June 13, 2024, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd also like to add that the Planning Board, on June 20 of 2024, adopted Resolution Number 2024-45, transmitting a recommendation to the Town Board regarding traffic patterns on East Second Street and Third Street in downtown Riverhead. And annexed to that resolution was a letter to the supervisor and members of the Town Board, seeking investigation and consideration of potentially creating a portion of East Second Street as one way, due to the lack of available parking for existing businesses and existing residents along East Second Street. In addition, the Highway Superintendent issued an inspection report on June 27, 2024, basically describing the width, travel lanes, and his observation regarding parking along Second Street and Third Street. And we're going to make those part of the record.
Okay.
Anybody want to be heard on this?
You? You folks have wanted to be heard? You've been sworn in, so.
Only example previously that's been granted is on Third Street, 45 Third Street. They needed five parking spaces, but they had only four parking spaces available for them, and one was granted to them, with having to both sides of the street being able to park. Now that if this happens, and our situation even less dire. It's half the size and one parking space is needed for them. We have a lot more parking than they do. So hopefully, this will help us.
We've looked at everything that's been presented from the last meeting and also these two things that Anne Marie just talked about.
Yes.
And there's definitely a concern about the width of Second Street and what's going to happen with more cars being put out there for parking.
Yes.
And it's not a comparison to Third Street, because Third Street is much wider than 27 and allows parking on both sides of the street. And I think we asked if anything can be done from a design standpoint, where you guys could get that extra space in there. And if you had to do one less unit, if that solves the problem, I don't know if you wanted to do that. We have a problem with the narrow road and some of the things that were said last time, and it definitely affects what's happening on that street. Once it's done, it's done, and then we can undo it.
Yes.
So, we're asking you for help.
Having one less unit, it's really not feasible for us, but there are two other options.
Go ahead.
Option one and option two, I can present them to you.
Fine.
And one is...
Want to put it on the... Heather?
Oh, you want me to put it up on the screen?
Yeah, give us a copy, but see if it goes up here.
Here, can I have a copy of that? There are two separate...
What do you want?
There are two separate scenarios, so I just need one copy and I'll put them up on the screen.
Well, I want to make sure you guys have enough.
I can see the one on the screen.
I'm going to plug alternative on first.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I think it'll be okay.
Yes, it's a little bit hard to see, but as you see from the street side, we propose that there's another curb cut to park one car in the front of the property to the right.
Number 12?
Correct. Which is, I don't think, is a great solution, in terms of look for the street. So, there's also... Number two is taking away the accessible parking.
Oh, okay. That's down there in the corner.
Yes.
Did you happen to run that past the planning staff before you came to this meeting?
I asked Greg, and he was like, "Oh, I really don't think that's a great idea. It just doesn't look good."
Right.
That was his comment. And I agree, it just doesn't look great, but something we could probably do. But instead of that, this is the number two option, taking away the accessible parking space that gives us the 12th in the back.
Are you talking about getting rid of the handicap accessible?
Correct.
That would be unacceptable under the code. I can assure the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, that would not be acceptable. With respect to option one, the Zoning Board of Appeals cannot approve a deviation in a site plan. In addition, I would just caution the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals that you have lot coverage and impervious surface coverage restriction and landscaping requirements. You know, the matter would really truly have to go back to the Planning Board.
So what do they propose? And they propose me a parking space in here?
You're probably getting rid of it.
Oh, no, that can't happen.
You can't get rid of it.
No.
Is it because the permeable space is less? Is that why?
Well, it's really a site plan matter, and without... You know, I don't want to, as counsel to the Zoning Board of Appeals, act as counsel to the Planning Board in interpretation of the code provisions, and without having them in front of me. You know, the Zoning Board of Appeals and myself as counsel right now really couldn't even comment whether or not this would be feasible. And I do know, and Heather, as a member of the Planning Department, I believe that the site plan was going to be looked at with respect to the landscape plan, correct?
Yes.
So, what you're proposing really, with the knowledge that even planning is going to re-review and look at the landscaping plan, the proposal, for instance, in one, takes away from the landscaping plan.
Okay.
And doing one less unit is totally out in your mind? I mean, you can't make it work?
I guess I can make the one unit, one of the back units, smaller.
Will that get us that parking space?
It would, yes. It would be about 600 square feet, like two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms? It could be one bedroom, couldn't it?
It could be, but much... yeah, it's not that great.
Are these for sale or are these going to be rentals?
Rentals.
I don't know how we can get around this, okay? Is anyone in the audience that hasn't spoken? Anyone on Zoom out there?
Just Dan is on Zoom.
What?
Just Dan is on.
Just Danny's on.
All right. Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I move the Appeal Number 2024-014. I move that appeal of the Appeal of Second Street Townhomes, 46 East Second Street, Riverhead, SCTM Number 600-128-5-31, Downtown Center 4, D.C.-4 zoning, variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-151b1, where proposed number of on-site parking stalls is 11 and the minimum required is 12 be denied. It is obviously self-created, and the existing road is narrow, with limited parking permitted on one side of the roadway. The addition of one additional vehicles is going to exacerbate traffic and parking issues, which would be detrimental, have detrimental impact on the neighborhood.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Prochetta?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Prochetta?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's where we stand.
Oh, and Dan's on Zoom.
Oh, Dan, are you there?
Yeah, he's on Zoom.
Oh, you're behind us.
My giant head is right behind you.
How do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with your future meetings.
Are we ready for the next?
Yes.
All right. Next is Appeal Number 2024-017, Gabrielle Watts, 189 Ackerly Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-104-1-12, Residence A40 zoning, to legalize an accessory structure, applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter 301-9A, 1A, where accessory structures are not permitted in a front yard. And if you could come up to the podium, you'll get sworn in.
Justin? We can't get Dan over here, can we? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan.
Much better.
Thanks.
We can see you now. All right. Please raise your right hand. Sal, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Gabrielle Charvat-Watts, at 189 Ackerly Street, Riverhead, New York, 11901.
And before we start, do you have your certified mail-in receipts?
I have. I have... so I have this... my neighbor sent me letters from them, that's the brick that has the shed next to it, saying that they support us. I have a neat copy of everything that's here. And so I have this photo, copy of the letter from the neighbor.
When we were in the building over there, we'd have CBA meetings and plans.
That's that.
Really?
No.
The receipt and all the ones that had to be sent.
These are on cases that...
All of the certified mail-ins and the active... everything's in order, and I will say that I did receive photos of the poster the day it went up, which was seven days ago, and then also today. And I believe it's all the same. There's two front copies from Sal, his wife, that sent it to me, and she didn't sign it, she went to work today. But she had emailed it to me. I had to have Ken shake a copy, Lord. I have handed in a copy of a letter from the listed owner of the house next to me that is adjoining property with the shed between us, that's in discussion. And they, husband and wife, both agreed to the parts. The letter is signed from the husband, but I... Wife had sent me the letter via email, and I don't... she didn't get a chance to sign it because her printer wasn't working.
Yeah, so for clarification to the members of the Zoning Board, it's two letters from the residence at 185 Ackerly Street stating, "Our resident butts up to the property noted above, and the structure is not a detriment of any kind."
How long has the shed been there?
I don't recall, honestly. It's fairly new. It's... but my husband had looked into the permits and everything like that when we had put it in, and he thought because it was under the measurements for a shed, that it wasn't considered a shed and we didn't need it. So that's why we didn't apply for a permit at the time.
Have you given any thought to putting it in the backyard?
We have, but what we use it for, mostly it's best to have in the front, because we use it for things that come in and out of the driveway and snowblower or things like that.
See, it gives us a problem there, because now this is accessory use in the front yard, which is not allowed by code. Plus, driving through the neighborhood, both streets, there's no one that has an accessory in the front yard. So this would almost be like setting a precedent, which I personally do not want to set, okay? Because we could have applications coming down the road that they want something in the front yard. So, we would like to have it moved to the backyard, and there's plenty of room back there. It's 76 by 50 feet, and that's all open.
Well, it's, I mean, according to what's on there, but I have a vegetable garden that takes up almost half of my backyard. I mean, that's not included on what you see, and I have native plant beds that I've been putting in for eight years. Excuse me.
It's all right. I don't know what to tell you. I mean...
So, if I had to... I don't think that we have the space in the backyard to put it. Well, one side, that is where it is.
Take your time.
The side that it exists on is completely have garden, walk-through gardens, the entire run of the property. From in front of the shed, right behind the shed, we use that to hide the garbage cans, so that way they're not seen by the street. Then there's a fence next to the house, and behind that, straight all the way to the back, all of that is garden. Also, as far as aesthetics to my neighbor, they do have an RV along that line, so I really wouldn't mind putting a shed in front of their RV, but I've planted and grown trees to block out their RV on their property, so I don't see that. So I have established plants that are thousands of dollars that, you know, are feeding native flora and fauna.
Is that shed on concrete or is it on wood floor?
It's on skid.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like if I had to come in with a forklift, we could take it out. I mean, obviously, if that's what you guys deem necessary, then that's what it is.
Well, would you consider like a shed in the back that could be, like a plastic shed, that you could put stuff in and then maybe just sell that one in the front?
Um...
I mean, that might work.
But then I... the only space that I really have to... so, along the left side, it's we keep that accessible by vehicle, so that way we can trim our big trees in the backyard. Otherwise, then we'd have... you know, like right now, we can bring in, rent a tree cleaner, you know, and bucket and go put it behind there. So if we put a shed along that side, then that would be impeded. Also, it's where we utilize for our animals, too. We have dogs and chickens, obviously, and so all of that space that I utilize for animals would not exist.
What about the other side?
The other side is, it's very narrow, beyond the deck. It's only, it's like six feet, and again, it's four feet of garden, maybe two feet of walkway in the middle. So along, if you walk in the right side of the right gate, there's just a little bit of a walkway to the right of that. It's basically, I think, 10 feet off the top of my head from the walkway to the deck to the fence. So there is like a corner space there, again, in front of the RV, but that's the...
Would you agree that there's no other homes in the neighborhood with a shed in the front yard?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge.
And you already quote, "How to shed in the rear yard, which you converted to a chicken coop?"
I use for both.
For both?
Multipurpose, yes.
This is 138. This is one foot is 20, one inch.
There are, you know, double car garages and single car garages. It's not like the uniform, every, you know, there's a variety of things, but...
Here, well, that's here, but this is a concrete patio.
And we also, just to note, as we're on the pecan gestuary, we do get flooding in our basement, and if I put another structure in that side lot, in the side yard on the east side, I think that would definitely worsen the water damage in the basement. We only get it once every six months to year at this point. We've lined the inside, we've patched cracks, hairline cracks, anything, and about every year we have to wait until it sometimes happens to see if we fixed it, but...
I guess the right side would be the easterly side, which is 138 at the top.
The right side is the west side.
From the street.
Looking from the street, the right side is the west side, where the gardens are and the neighbor with the letter. And I have an entire tree line, too, so that shed is in front of an entire line of arborvitae that are over 13 feet tall.
And what's down that right side? Again, I'm sorry.
There's a line of arborvitae right from... I have a five feet of garden in the front, so you can see when you pull out of the driveway in both directions. And then there's an entire line of arborvitae along my neighbor's property line until you hit the tree.
So the shed that Mr. Barnes recommended or suggested, the rubber shed?
Yeah, they come in a kit.
Yeah, I'm familiar. I mean, like, I prefer the aesthetics of wood to the rubber. Could I put in a bunch of rubber sheds in my backyard? And again, that's, I don't know.
As an alternative, because then you could sell the front shed.
Yes.
And then you wouldn't have this problem.
But so wouldn't I have a problem still because it's an accessory shed on the property? Because that was what I was ticketed for, was for an accessory item.
You already have an accessory.
In the front yard.
Yes.
In the rear yard. Now you want a second one, not just in the rear yard, but in the front yard.
And that's the problem.
Yes.
So do the rubber sheds have any merit with you at all?
We, again, I would have to know what the permits in the Planning Board says about size of sheds, and again, is that okay because it's going to be on the other side of my property against the property? That's the neighbor who had called code enforcement on me, so I don't know how amenable he would be to having a shed butt up to his property line either.
Well, there's 13.8 feet on that side, on the right side.
Between the shed and the fence?
Between the house and the fence.
Okay, but so that, like I said, that's where, again, where we have accessibility to the backyard for maintaining of the property.
Well, you wouldn't put a 13.8 wide shed in there anyway. I mean, the shed on the other side is 7.2 inches wide. So if you had that on that side, you'd have another six inches left between the shed and the house.
Or six feet.
Or six feet.
It would have you six feet. Take it, but so...
I will note, though, that you need at least 10 feet between the accessory.
I know, but then she could get a variance for that once she's behind the front line of the house, right?
Well, maybe you should discuss the storage issue with your husband, and then come meet with one of the building inspectors and see alternatively where you could put it.
Okay.
And if you need a variance, you have to come back to us.
Yeah, that would be, that would not be a precedent.
The front is just not going to happen.
Okay.
Just the way it is.
And...
But you can sit and work with the town and see where you can alternatively put one. And then, again, I would sell the front one on eBay or something or on Marketplace. I think you would do, you'd make out.
Plus, you'd get all of that stuff out of there.
Yeah, but then I'd have an ugly rubber shed, too.
Well, they're prettier than us.
Well, I have one.
Yeah. No offense to your shed.
Move it.
You'd have a lot more...
You can't see it.
Yeah.
You'd have a lot more area that's free in the front yard. You know, I don't know, there's, the day I was there, I think there were four vehicles there, and there looks like there's a lot of children's stuff there, so all that, if that was, you know, moved, then you'd have a lot more space.
Yeah, we're in the process of getting rid of two and getting a new vehicle, so we've got a lot of heads in the house currently.
So, why don't we adjourn this, if it's good for you, two weeks, and you come back? Excuse me, as Leroy said, meet with the building inspector, and somehow we can help you with some of that stuff.
Okay.
And see what happens, but as he says, that front accessory cannot go.
I mean, if it needs, if it needs, if it needs to be moved or there's going to be an alternative and you might need a variance, we can keep this open.
Yeah.
And then you could submit to us an amended application.
Amended.
It's not going to be a big deal. It really isn't, so. You might like not having that shed in the front yard after you talk it out.
I wouldn't mind not having it, but again, it's just my, a lot of storage with my husband for stuff for the house.
I understand. You got to work it out, that's all.
Thank you.
All right.
And I'm sorry that we upset you.
It's all right.
It's just a shed.
I had a week last night, my uncle, I just...
Oh, sorry. We all have bad weeks, you know?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Who's got the reading?
I do.
So... We're going to... no.
Mr. Chairman?
We're just going to adjourn it for now. Yeah, this way they can file an amended application and they can...
What's the next meeting?
July 11.
July 11.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I request that Appeal Number 2024-017, Gabrielle Charvat-Watts, 189 Ackerly Street, Riverhead, SCTM Number 600-104-1-12, Residence A40, R.A. 40 zoning, legalize accessory structure, respectfully be adjourned until 7/11/24.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Prochetta?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Mr. Zaweski votes aye, too.
Danny had to vote for Danny.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Zaweski?
I vote aye as well.
Thank you, Danny.
You having good weather up there?
Yeah, it's actually pretty nice right now.
It's been hot down here again.
I need the other one, too.
Is there anything else that we need to discuss?
Minutes?
Minutes?
About dinner.
All right, I have a motion to accept the minutes.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
May I accept the adjournment for the meeting?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zaweski and I vote aye. So Zowsky and I vote aye.